I'd like to call the meeting to order. The November, the November Board of Commissioners meeting. This time I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Sue Lee.
Just a personal note here, if you see all these fine looking people that you don't normally see here, I have got a group of family and friends that are here to help me celebrate my 10 years of being a county commissioner, and I appreciate y'all being here to support me tonight. And I'm going to call on my son, Justin Lee, to do the indication.
God, we thank you for the blessings of this day, and we pray over the citizens of this county and the decisions that we made concerning them tonight. We pray for our country as they go about to make a momentous decision tomorrow, and we pray that this country will be in your will and that you will continue to bless America. It's in your son's name that we offer these prayers. Amen.
Thank you. Would you join me with a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Justin. Vice Chair Lee. At this time, we'll look at the agenda. We've got to walk on item one C, NC DOT update. We had the closed session. We have moved that to another date. So I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I make a motion that we, I'll prove the minutes.
Okay. So you've got a second? All in favor? Okay, the agenda is approved. All right. At this time, we have a couple of employees that we'd like to call your attention to. We're going to ask Ms. Lynn Fields, if she would come forward, please.
Ms. Fields has been with us since 1994 at the Social Services Department, and she has taken on every duty that came forward. She's turned director, and she is retiring immediately, but she's going to the state and going to work for the state. So this is acknowledgement and great appreciation for her dedicated service to the service of Sampson County from 1994 to 2000. Thank you so much.
Commissioner, good day. Ms. Fields, I would like to say that working with Ms. Fields has been a great opportunity. She started, and we didn't lose a beat. And all the work you have done, I want to say kudos to you.
Lynn, I was on the committee the day we hired you, and I could not have been more proud. I was nervous because I thought, how in the world are we going to know who's going to be the best of the best? And I prayed and prayed about it, and there wasn't even a question. And you have done a great job, and you've made me proud, and I'm so proud of you. And good luck with your next venture.
Lynn, I'm going to have to say goodbye, knowing that I don't want to, because we started together at DSS. I left before you did, but I'm happy for you to be leaving also.
Well, I thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to serve for 30 years. It has been a great career, and I'm blessed to have been able to be here for 30 years. So thank you all.
Thank you. The next one, I'm going to stand here so you can hear me. My wife said I was not loud enough. We'll call David Clack forward, please. David has been with us since 1994 as well, and he's retiring at the end of the year. An acknowledgement for the grateful appreciation and your dedication to service to the citizens of Sampson County. Thank you, David. Let me come around.
It's been a pleasure to work for Sampson County. I've got a great crowd. I've been blessed to work with a great crowd of fans, lots of good policy heads for budgets, things like that, and the county manager and administration staff that all the great work with.
May I add that I have known David since he was like three or four. His mother, his mother was my boss at the hospital, and she was tough. But I am so proud of you and the man you've become. Mabel Clack would be so proud for what you've done for this county. You've been great, and I really appreciate you, David.
Thank you, David. You too worked with me. I started in 89, and you started about 94, somewhere like that. But we had been working together until I retired. And I believe and I know that you have done a great job for Sampson County. Good luck with your future endeavors.
Yeah, congratulations, David.
I want to point out, too, that David has been, has done a great job, and of course, working closely as chair and vice chair with him. You learn to appreciate his skills and his knowledge of Sampson County and what works and doesn't work. He's done an outstanding job, and we will sorely miss him in the future. But I understand he loves to fish, so he's planning to do a lot of fishing. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Now, we have replaced, or we hired someone to take the place of the Social Services Director. We did that just a few minutes ago, and I would like to introduce Ms. Patty Santos, if she would, please come forward.
Ms. Santos has been with the county for some time as it is, but she left and went to work with the state in Raleigh and has come back. And in fact, she knew where her home was. So she came back in a timely manner because with Lynn retiring, we would sorely miss Lynn, and Ms. Santos will not miss a beat. She knows everyone in there, and we're looking forward to you working with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And do you have any names today?
I'm looking forward to the opportunity and ask some big questions.
Mr. Clack, will you give us an update on the property that we have to sell?
We received the latest offer on the property. It was in an amount of $503,724.50. The next time bids will be due will be November the 12th at 2:00 p.m. The new minimum bid must be at least $528,960.72.
Thank you, Mr. Clack. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Clack? Okay, here or none. That's pretty set routine. This time, we'll move on to item C, and Mr. Jones and Mr. Easton with the North Carolina DOT, would you come forward and give us your report, please?
How are y'all this evening? Good to see y'all again. Wanted to start out, let y'all know, or as everybody knows, Hurricane Helene came through western NC. Sampson Maintenance there in Clinton has sent 19 volunteers out there. We're still out there. We're rotating on a weekly basis. We have majority of our equipment and a lot of our assets out there right now, so keep those folks in your prayers and your thoughts there. I've been out there on a trip, and it's a, it's a pretty severe thing. So we may be a little slow around here, but we're going to pick it up early in the year when, when they get fixed up out there. When we're not out there, we're kind of on our routine operations. We're installing pipes ahead of planned paving, doing ditching, regular complaints of people and what they need. Lately, we've been picking up deer and a lot of them, so be careful. I believe it's getting that time of year. Just a few numbers for y'all. Since July 1st, we have, you've probably seen us out, cut about 300 shoulder miles. Very important, gets water off the road, makes the road safer, and I hope that that is seen in the future and improves some of those conditions. We've also installed and repaired around 250 linear foot of pipes. This number's going to continue to go up. That's our main focus right now. And then, just to brag on our folks, DOT and ourselves, we don't do much paving anymore. It's just kind of a lost art, but some folks at Sampson Maintenance paved Clayton Road and Rents Road in small sections, of course, but it was quite an accomplishment that we're proud of. Some of our folks have also been involved in some community outreach lately and touch a truck events. We've been to Spivey's Corner Fire Department, and we've done an event at Sampson Community College. If there's any interest from any one public for us to take trucks and, you know, get those kids involved and see what we do, we're glad to do it. We want, we want the public to see what we do, and our, our employees really enjoy going out there. The next couple of weeks, we're going to start preparing for what's hopefully a lot winter, but we've got to do our dry runs and get our, our salt equipment ready, our brine trucks, and be ready just in case of a snow event. So you may see us out with some snow plows and spreaders, but that's just in preparation. There's no snow coming, hopefully. Lastly, we had some additional paving dollars come up, and they were fortunately given to Sampson County. So within the next few months, you should see these roads paved. I'm going to read them off right quick. North Church Avenue in Garland, I believe that roads a few names, but that's the main one. Lake Artesia Road from Pine Ridge Road to Beulah Church Road. Oscar Tate Road in its entirety. Rents Road from Green Path to Autry Mill Road. Halltown Road in its entirety. Powell Road in its entirety. And then we have some small treatments planned on Enoch Road. Widening planned on Two Road. Some patching at the always stop on Five Bridge Road. Some patching at the left turn lane there on 421 at Clear Run. Paving planned on William R. King Road, and then some patching planned on the always stop there at US 13. We've noticed some deficiencies there, so that's kind of the Sampson Maintenance world right now, and I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Jones.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Easton? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. I think I'm going to rethink how we do it. Lance is a tough act to follow, but I'll try, try to keep you very, very short right here on the construction side of things. So we've completed the, the bridge replacement on Wright Bridge Road. It's open to traffic now, and we've recently on US 701 just completed the temporary onsite detour bridge. So there's a new traffic pattern out there on 701. I encourage everyone to be safe, you know, traveling through that detour. They're about 43% complete on the project, and we look to see progress pick up once they get started on the, on demolition and, and repair or rebuilding the, the new bridge. Of late, we, we did pave and complete NC 50, King Road, Lisbon, and Marcy here in town. So that, that's a paving contract that we recently completed. We've also got in the works and, and an active resurfacing contract where we just completed Goshen Church Road, but paving remains to be completed at the circle at Nougan Grove, NC 50 from NC 55 to I-40 Overpass, NC 55 from NC 50 to Johnston County Line, Mingo Church Road, Underwood Road, Murphy Road, Mosley, Mosley Avenue, Chancy Road, Bonny Mill, Roseboro Highway, Dixie Road, and Bass Lake Road. And that is, that's all the updates that I have currently for our active projects. And we do have a couple of members that have graciously decided to attend with us tonight from our Traffic Services Unit, and I was going to, you know, provide them some time to update them on any traffic services projects that they have.
Okay. We truly want to thank you for Lisbon Street. The ride is good, and the lines is good. You could see it, and I'm getting comments every day almost of how nice that looked. And we want to say thank you.
Right.
But also, on, on 403, there were double lines, and double lines because people was coming from the homes and people was passing. But now people are passing again because they can't see the lines.
Okay.
So, so it's a no passing zone, but you can't see the line, so, so now they're passing again. So it would be good to make sure we get those lines covered, so no one would.
All right. We'll make a note of it and get it addressed.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
I appreciate, appreciate what you did with Lisbon Street. I've drove on that thing for 40 years, and finally, when I'm not driving it anymore, you repaved it. But thank you anyway. All right. Please come forward.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank y'all for having us. I'm Stoney Mathis with our Traffic Services Unit. We're out of Castle Hain. We cover Division Three, which includes Sampson County.
And I'm Bryce Cox, also from Traffic Service.
So we're going to share with you some projects that have been done in the relatively recent past and also some upcoming projects and so forth. I do want to ask, sir, where is that section of 403, please?
It's down by Timberlake.
Timberlake, okay. We'll, we'll check on that.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll jump into some of the things that have recently, relatively recently been completed, and that is a little bit older one, but NC 403 at Pew Road and HB Lewis Road in that area, we installed a traffic signal a little over a year ago.
Yeah.
Let's see, and finished up September 2023. US 421 at NC 903 Delway, we installed wide pavement markings and solar powered flashers, red flashers on the stop signs for the NC 903 approaches. And we also installed solar powered yellow warning flashers on the intersection warning signs in advance of the intersection on US 421 approaches. That was completed in October, just this past month. Signals on NC 24 in Clinton, we just installed new coordinated signal timings throughout that system of signals to try to help keep traffic flowing better on NC 24. You know, so people aren't, hopefully, hopefully not stopping at every signal. You know, you get a nice progression going through the signal, so that was completed at middle of October last month. And then Mitz Academy School Flashers, NC DOT assisted, provided funding and assisting in the installation of those flashers for school, school warning, to bring about better attention to the school warning signs out there. And that was installed end of September. And you want to go into some of the always stops?
Sure. So I'm sure the, the main thing we want to talk about is always stops, and so we're going to kind of briefly go over six of the always stops. These are the ones that are on your, the primary routes, which I'm sure people have very well noticed. So we've installed six on primary routes in Sampson County, two on NC 242 at High House Road and at Harnett Church Road, two on 55 at Warren Mill and at Green Path, and then two on US 13 at Autry Mill Road and Wash McLamb Road. The ones on 242 and on 55 were installed in May and June of last year, and then the two on US 13 were installed September and October of last year as well. Obviously, there wasn't enough warnings, and we had gotten some concerns about, you know, the lack of signage, lack of attention that needed to be drawn to the new always stops. And so as a result, we installed dual mounted signage for those primary routes, and that was back in November, and that was on, at all six locations. And as part of that plan as well, we were going to add flashers to those locations as well, and so it took a little bit of time for those flashers to come in, and then we were able to get those installed on all of those primary routes at, on those always stop locations in June of this year. And so that's at all, all six of those locations.
Get into the upcoming always stops, and then I'll take over.
Yeah, that works. Continuing on the always stop conversations, we do have several upcoming as well, but all of these are, you know, pending. There's not a scheduled install date at this time. All of these are also just on secondary routes in Sampson County. So these are at McCollin Road and Keener Road, two on Dunn Road, at Autry, Autryville Road, and at Mini Hall Road, and then one at Two Road at Baptist Chapel Road. And I apologize. And then we just found out today that we have obtained funding for an always stop at 242 at Mini Hall Roads or Church Road, just north of Salemburg.
Thank you, Bryce. And then just a couple of other upcoming projects. We are working with Union Elementary School, assisting with installing flashers on school warning signage there, and that is in progress, in process. And then 701 Business at NC 403 Signal, right here in, in town, we're, we should be doing, planning to do a total rebuild of that signal and adding flashing yellow arrows signals to that when that rebuild is done, and that's planned for 2025.
Can you make some more details on the flashing light at Union? I've been having some calls on that, and I need to return. Where are we on that at Union Elementary?
I know somebody with the school has been working to get, I think they have the funding for that. I think what we're trying to figure out is, you know, working on the ins and outs of how that installation process is going to go. They've got a contractor lined up to have the install, which is awesome. It's more or less just getting that paperwork established and getting the process ready, and then the contractor can roll with that.
Do you have any idea what sort of time we're talking about, or is that just?
It's kind of in their court. It really just kind of depends, but I appreciate asking the question.
Thank you.
Next year.
I got two questions. One is talking about the flashing lights. I got phone calls, too, because they said that the school and someone else had done some funding. How many schools do we have in Sampson County that don't have the four-way or the flashing lights at the schools? Has that been addressed? I know at Middlewood Elementary, I rode by there, and we've got two entrances there in, on the other end of the county, and there's nothing there. I think it's something that we, us and you and everyone, it needs to be addressed, is I think just safety should come first with our children.
I, I don't know the answer to that. I will say, we do rely on the schools to come to us if they want additional measures done to, to bring about attention to those school zones, and we are encouraging of that. We're, we're supportive of that, generally speaking. I don't know when we wouldn't be, honestly, but generally speaking, we're supportive of flashers to bring about more attention to those school warning signs.
And my other question is talking about always stops. I have addressed it with the two young men sitting behind you and at the RPO meeting also. Is there, is there any plan to put any consistency to our four-way stops? If you go from one county to another county to another county, you run through a four-way stop. Well, I do, and I'm bad. I mean, I'm running trucks all the time, and I just went, I go, I blow through one, I'm like, that was a four-way stop. Or I go up to Johnson, just getting comparison, all theirs are super. You know you're coming up on a four-way stop. I think we need some consistency within the DOT if we had to get it out of Raleigh. I'd rather you guys do it. I don't want them to, you know, I'd rather us do it local, but I'd like to see some consistency within the four-way stops that it's, that each county or all counties were the same.
So whenever we started installing these always stops in Division Three, which our northernmost counties are Sampson and Duplin, and then you go to Johnson County, then another division, but we just started out with the always stops, no additional advanced signage. If there, if there's a need, if we see a need in the field, we'll put that in, but our standard is not to put, has been previously, to not put in additional signage and flashers and, and these various measures. The always stop of itself, our, we have a crash reduction factor list that shows the percentage that different treatments are supposed to reduce crashes. The always stop in and of itself is supposed to reduce these severe angle crashes by 72%, which is fairly, pretty significant. But then, you know, we, we were having some, some outcry and so forth from, for a need for additional warning signage and so forth, so we took a look at that, and we came back, as I believe Bryce mentioned earlier there, the dual mounted stop ahead signs, which dual mounted meaning left and right shoulder stops, or stop ahead signs, as well as dual mounted stop signs for the primary route approaches. That's where we were getting the most outcry, was on the, on the primary routes, as well as a flasher, a red flasher on the right shoulder stop sign. So all of those are above and beyond what we would normally do. We may at times put in an advanced stop ahead sign, but those are additional measures that we made our standard for primary route approaches, so dual mounted stop aheads, dual mounted stops, and a flasher on the right shoulder stop sign. To answer your question about consistency and, you know, crossing division lines, we are on divisions, you know, and, and so we have our own way of doing things, but in our division, we did hear the call, and we answered that. As far as bringing about consistency, again, different, different regions, different divisions are going to do their thing different ways, but there's also beyond just that. There are, you need to consider the given site, too. You know, we, and we, we always have that caveat in there. If we can't reasonably get some of these things in, you know, we may, we may not be able to get some things in, and it's the same thing for other regions. They may not be able to get some things in, and, you know, you go from the mountains to the Piedmont to the coast, you're going to have different differences going on, so those are reasons that we may not be able to have consistency. But I did mention this, we actually were on a phone call with our regional traffic engineer who we look to that helps us with safety projects and so forth, and we have quite a bit of coordination with them on safety projects, and we were actually talking to him earlier today, and, and I mentioned this, brought this up, and that was, he, he contributed that, you know, you'll have differences in different areas and so forth, and even with, in different sites within the same county, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any more questions?
Yes, I would certainly like to thank you on behalf of the constituents in the Harrows and Delway area where you completed, as we talked about, those flashes. That's going to save a lot of lives. Everybody that lived down there knew how many deaths and accidents that have been to each one of those crossroads, and we certainly thank you for starting the process. It may not be that that ends the process, but we thank you for that much of it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Daniel, you'll have a hard time getting them here another time, I'm sure. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to our action items. I'm going to open a public hearing. Ms. Lance, would you please come forward?
Mr. Chairman, at their October 14th Sampson County Planning Board voted to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve a staff-initiated text amendment. This amendment aims to revise the dimensional requirements for the residential, residential agricultural and mixed residential zoning districts. Specifically, it addresses Section 903, 904, and 905B of the Sampson County zoning ordinance. This topic has been under discussion by the planning board for well over a year now and has received considerable attention. The proposed amendment was created to address concerns about preserving the county's rural character while also taking into account regulations from surrounding counties. The text amendment, the staff prepared two options for the planning board to consider. Option A is a moderate increase to lot size requirements, and option B is a more substantial change to the existing standards, and those better align with the surrounding counties. So option B, I will go over that a little for you. The lot area would be changed to be one acre in the residential agricultural and mixed residential districts. It does change the lot depth requirement to 200 feet, and the side setbacks and the rear setbacks are changed from, side is from 10 to 20, and the rear from 25 to 35. But that would put each lot in those districts would be required to be an acre. In the residential zoning district, we would go from 25,000 square feet to 35, 30,000 square feet for lots that have county water, and those without would be one acre lots that would be required. Our board did vote to unanimously recommend option B for approval based on the following zoning consistency statement. The Sampson County Planning Board finds the proposed text amendment to be consistent with the goals and objectives of the Sampson County Land Use Plan. This recommendation is grounded in the board's belief that the amendment will reduce density, better aligned with the regulations. that the amendment will reduce density, better align with the regulations with those of neighboring jurisdictions, preserve rural character, and enhance the quality of residential development in our county. The planning board finds that the text amendment is best, is in best public interest, reasonable, and recommends approval to the Sampson County Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Does anyone have a question for Ms. Lance? I understand that it was unanimous, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this? Here are none, I'll close the public hearing. I move we adopt the zoning ordinance amendment, Option B, according to the Vance, Vance is in public health, safety or welfare is consistent with any adopted county land use documents and specific intent on zoning ordinance that meet it, and with a consistency statement.
What do you want your effective date to be for that ordinance amendment?
Just include that as part of your motion.
The date would be effective December the 1st. All right, second, you got a second? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All right, it's approved unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Turlington, you and Mr. Ross are up next.
Good afternoon. I let Mark handle last one, so I guess I'll handle this one. So, the last update, our last board meeting, Mark came to you all and said that we had received two bids for the Ivanhoe Water System project. And so, we were unable to open that bid due to the general statutes. You have to have three bids to open them. So, we re-advertised and set that opening date to be October 17th. So, we had that, and it has came in pass. And at that meeting, we had two bids that were received, the same two from last time, but we were able to open those under the general statutes. And at that time, we basically were, received them and went through the questions and addendums, they were all received. Everybody had no comments or questions. The apparent low responsible responsive bidder was Harry and Robin Bark upon opening and inspecting the bids. Their base bid, and I have in your packet, if y'all have that, a list of the different schedules. Now, we've discussed this in a previous board meeting, discussing the schedule, that's the base bid, and then the alternates additionally to that. So, the base bid includes the following roads, and I'll read those to you. Lipsen Bridge Road, Harrows Highway 2, Clear Run School Road, Tomahawk Highway, Fire Tower Road, Trestle Road, Alpine Church Road, Hoover Road, G Shaw Road, and Barn Hill Road. And the limits of those roads are shown in an attachment to it, which is a overall map, as you will see in the back of your thing. There's two maps, one is the original that has the base bid plus all additives, and then the other one is the project as I'm gonna recommend tonight, which is just the base bid. And it's missing one or two of the roads that are additives. So, upon opening the bids, it was found that the base bid by itself was gonna be over budget for the Ivanhoe project. This was without any of the alternates concluded that we had. So, we proactively, you know, anticipating there's probably gonna be some construction costs that we were not gonna anticipate for. We had alternates that would hopefully decrease the overall project budget, and those included swapping out pipe material, two different types PVC pipe. We have traditionally used SDR 21, but our project was gonna bid out for C-900 pipe. There's no difference in quality for the county, it's what the county has historically used. And then alternate two gives the contractor a better option if he wants to use different pipe material for directional drilling. So, we gave the contractor a few options, 'cause when differences come, the production chain, sometimes you get better prices. So, with that being said, alternate one plus the base bid, put the project within budget. In the paragraph that I have in the recommendation letter, it states that, so stay within available funding for construction, which is $10,766,000. Schedule A, which is the base bid in those roads that I mentioned, plus alternate one, which is swapping the C-900 PVC pipe for SDR 21, this would be within the project budget at $10,553,087. So, this is below the total construction cost by $213,579. This variance, however, does not allow for any additional roads. Therefore, it is recommended to incorporate this variance into the contingency. And if you look at the project budget that I have in my recommendation letter, DWI requires you to carry a 5% contingency. And with this being a $10 million project, it's already $500,000 that we have to carry throughout the life of the project until the very end. So, at this time, we recommend that we hold on to that $213, add it to that contingency, so we change it from a 5% contingency as required by DWI to a 7% contingency, which at the end of the project, we can look to see if there's additional funding to use for additional roads at that point. So, keep on going further down. We've mentioned this, the permit and that we have, we have, all those have been received today. The next step is to come in front of you, get the resolution to pass this project, send all that information to DWI, and start the construction. Proactively, the construction schedule that I have listed includes the marketing campaign. The marketing campaign flyers have been hung out today, starting. But the first actual meeting that they're gonna have in the community is November 7th. So, that will be happening this Thursday. Let's see, and the other attachments that I do have in there is your bid tab. That shows you all the prices, how it all broke down, if you would like to reference further. And also, I will just quickly go through the overall project budget before making my final recommendation. The project budget, which was the $10,500,000 for construction, additional pieces of this project to make the whole entire project work, survey, engineering, permitting, construction administration, funding administration, which our ongoing task was $1.4 million. Land acquisition for the booster pump station costed us $20,000. Connection fee compensation, so this is gonna be from running the service meter to the house. We have $525,000 allocated toward that, and then that contingency amount that I have. So, that's the project budget, and now I'll go down to my recommendation. We recommend, based on all the information above, that we tentatively award pending DWI approval and obtaining one final permanent utility easement to contract for Ivanhoe Water System to Harry and Robin Bark, the apparent low responsible responsive bidder, based on Schedule A, which is base bid, plus alternate A, for a contract award amount of $10,553,087. Any questions, that's a lot.
Could you repeat that, please?
Everything, or just?
No, that's good. We are within budget of the grant, is that correct?
With the base bid and the alternate that we have, we are within budget.
Right. Y'all have any questions? Yeah, I've read it, and everything looks good to me. All right.
I move that we adopt a resolution tentatively awarding the bid for construction of the Ivanhoe Water Project to Harry and Robin Bark, excuse me, as recommended by the DUBR engineers contingent upon the approval of DWI and securing the remaining easements.
Second.
Got a second, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Ross. It's been a long, hard way getting here. I know it's been two years we've been working on this.
Finally here, and I know that residents in Ivanhoe is gonna be very, very proud of y'all.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of work ahead. All right, we're down to Vice Chair Lee, you got board appointments?
Yes, we have board appointments to serve on the Sampson Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, and again, I really appreciate all the hard work that these people put into. I have, we're gonna vote on the first three reappointments for this three-year term. Tara Jackson, Teela Kivitt, and Brandon Warren. I move that we reappoint these. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? New appointments, I move that we appoint Vince Nelson and Annette Starling to serve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. We're down to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or changes or additions to that? Hearing none, I accept the motion to approve. You have a motion to approve, you need a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, the consent agenda is approved. All right, that brings us to the public comment section. This time, Ms. Hunt.
Elaine Faison-Hunt, 7171 Old Wassong Road, Turkey, North Carolina. Let me first say, I wish you Godspeed, Commissioner Kivitt. Thank you for listening to me occasionally. It seemed you was listening. The way I could tell, you was responding every now and then. I'm here once again for Old Wassong Road, and I would need for county water. We, we need the county water. Our story has not changed, as a matter of fact, it has intensified. It has intensified because since September, things have been happening involving my water that I've had to spin out for whales and different things. So, as for me, it has intensified. We need county water, not only me, but a few others down our lane. You all have said I needed at least 56 petition people, and we don't have 56 people. You all can make changes, 'cause you can almost do anything you want to sitting where you're sitting. If we don't have 56 people, what do we do? I know other places that you're doing stuff for, as far as the water, and their amount of residents is really few. I said, I wish it was possible that we can change places just for a day or so, so you can come and live on Old Wassong Road, and you can try the water for yourself. For me, it's serious, and I've been coming to you all over two years now. And I know you're tired of seeing me, 'cause God knows I'm tired of looking at you all. I'll be looking at some of you for long, but as, you know, and I know my time is up, but another problem has surfaced in our neighborhood. EJ Ken have done water testing, and some of my neighbors now have the PFAS, and they've been told not to drink the water, not to cook in the water, not to, not to, not to. So, I'm asking you all, what do we do? What do we do? We need help from you all, you up there for a reason. When you signed up for the task, it was for a reason, to help all, all of us. You get excited when you make, you have successes, achievement. Get excited and help some of us have an achievement and get county water. Because I know you can, you have, you have the power to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Mr. Bonds, you're up.
Yes, sir. All right, accordingly, good evening. I know y'all tired of seeing me, 'cause I sure was tired of seeing y'all. But until we make some changes, you're gonna continue to see me. I'm here this evening, nothing has changed, and I've come to a place and point to expect it from you all. No board appointees, it's the same old, same old. No one can get on, get a board seat unless you're in a clique, apparently. The definition of insanity, you all should know it, is to do the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. We seen here this evening that with the new appointee of the DSS Department, it's gonna be more of the same. So, if you truly won't change, if you truly want to go forward, let's get rid of some of this mindset that has been stagnated here in this county. From various positions to elected positions, we need to get rid of the mindset, because if you do not get rid of the mindset that comes with individuals, you will be stuck in the cloud of insanity. And this is where we are, and this is where, this is why these group of people come the way they do, no matter what ethnicity we are, political affiliation we are, no matter what religion we are, no matter our, our different perspectives on life, you have successfully brought us together. And we are tired, and we are fed up. And I don't care if you don't like me, 'cause I'm, I'm, I'm used to that. I'm built for this. So, I don't come up here messing around with you all, I'm direct. I look you in the eye, I talk to you after the meetings. I have gotten into contact with you individually, with exception of one, and now you're gone. So, I don't look for anybody to put me in any of their cliques, 'cause I'm not a cliquish person. I can stand alone, because the hand of the Lord is upon me. And so, with that being said, it's time to hold you all accountable, each and every one of you, because we're tired of your mess, and it's time for you to go. And if you're not gonna uphold what you say you will do, either step down, or we will work our hardest to get rid of you. And, and it doesn't get any plainer than that. And I know that's not proper English, but I'm not here to teach you English lesson. I'm here to bring to you what is going on and what is apparent. And, you know, if you've been here 10 years and stuff is still the same, you might need to look at some stuff. You might need to look, as Michael Jackson said, the man in the mirror, because nothing has changed, nothing, nothing has changed. The same stuff. And so, we're tired, we're tired, we're tired, y'all. We're tired. Don't ask you to beg for water. We don't live in a third world country. We live in the United States of Doggone in America. We ought to set the standard. Y'all have failed collectively. You have failed, you have failed. And if no one has told you, I'm telling you, you failed. Y'all have a blessed evening, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. I think this is Mr. Butler, is that correct?
Yeah.
Hey, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Alman F. Butler. I live at 1265 Nathan Dudley Road. And I also hear about water. I was here, I think, about a year ago, and I was told that it was coming and would be here, would come in soon. And I talked to one of my neighbors, and she says she has talked to some people that said that it wouldn't be long before we'd get water. But I found out also that the water's gonna stop at my house. And I've got some neighbors that's with me that live right down below me. And the road is not paved, it's not a county road. And I feel like they have the right to have water as well as I do. That's why I asked them to come with me. And we're soliciting you guys to, however you do it, take the road over, it needs to be paved. We are, and an issue really with the contractor that built the houses, he promised that he was gonna build the house and pave the road and run water down there, which he did not do. And that is why we're standing here today, to see what you guys can do. That's all I've got to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is David Brown. I live at 3030 Fleet Cooper Road in Roseboro. I'm probably pretty sure you remember me. Wasting money is a really big deal with me, because it's not your money, it's our money. Now, we all understand that you need money to provide services to us. I don't think we have a problem with that. But when you waste money, that's a serious mistake, and it should grieve you. And I'll go back to what some of the other people say. The perception is that when you make that mistake, it doesn't grieve you. It's just, oh, well, we made a mistake, we're human, we make a mistake, and we just move on. But do you fix that mistake? Do you sit down with yourselves and say, okay, how can we make a mistake? I go back, you wasted $44,000 just on postage for a project to have a fee for the convenience sites, and then that dropped. for a project to have a fee for the convenience sites, and then that dropped. Okay? So the real reason I keep mentioning that tonight is that I have a son that's a dep, a grandson that's a deputy sheriff, a new one. Served his time into the jail, now he's in a patrol car. But now what he has to happen is, they don't have enough people to run the jail. A year ago, when I was here, the deputy sheriff that was in charge of the jail said he was only at half staff. When you do that, you put the prisoner's lives in jeopardy, you put the deputy's lives in jeopardy, and if you lose the deputy, then of course you have the family. I'll tell you something, when I briefly worked at the state prison, a young gentleman told me, he says, you need to always remember that the prisoners let us guard them. You don't have enough deputies in there to control all those prisoners, if they decide, we don't want you here. Right, so you, you're gonna need their cooperation, you need a high quality person in there. If you take the money that you wasted, which is about two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars, starting salary for a Sampson County deputy is thirty-eight thousand dollars, that's seven deputies. If you hadn't wasted that money, you could have paid seven more deputies. Perhaps that would have made up a shortage. The other thing, when you pull a deputy off of their patrol route, two things. One, you either don't have coverage, or you have to have a supervisor go, go out and provide coverage. So if you need a supervisor to entertain a situation, he can't do that, without leaving people in Sampson County without deputy coverage. Now, I've lived on Sampson County, I mean, uh, Rose, Fleet Cooper Road for thirty years. The number of deputies that I've seen patrol that road, you can count on two hands. Except for today, for whatever reason, that kind of burst my bubble, there were two incidents within the neighborhood, and there's been five deputies out there. So, I just, uh, take a look at your money and see what you can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And if you'll recall, I invited you to come and talk with us privately about that, and you couldn't make it.
Uh, well, I, I will accept the blame for that, I thought you were gonna call me back if you need me to come see and get a schedule. I'm more than happy to do that, yes, sir.
There's, there's more backstory than what you, what you have. Anyway, we'll move on, thank you for coming. That's all that's signed up, I'll call on the county manager's report.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, my report is gonna be very brief, and I'm going to read you an email that I plan to send you later on tonight, as soon as we finish this meeting. And this is "Good Evening", this is addressed to the, to the commissioners. I have thoroughly enjoyed being the Sampson County manager for the past fourteen and a half years, as well as the previous ten years, working with Sampson County on behalf of USDA Rural Development to develop multiple infrastructure projects. Moving forward, I offer my best wishes to previous boards of commissioners, the current board, and future boards. I also extend my best wishes to all previous and current county employees, as well as the citizens of Sampson County. Finally, I will be retiring at the end of November two thousand twenty-four. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Causey. I'd just like to say that you've served this county well. The people that think differently don't know the backstory, and I thank you for what you've done. I didn't know you until I, I got to be a commissioner, and, uh, I heard the same stories that some of them are repeating in here, and I never found them to be true. But I thank you for what you've done, you have, you have helped this county immensely, and we appreciate it.
You have done an excellent job for the county. When I first was running, I was told by the current chair, Billy Lockamy, what a wonderful manager you were, and he just sang your praises, and I, I couldn't believe that person really existed. I thought I'm gonna have to see for it, see it for myself, and I can promise you, you were that good and even better. You have put yourself on the line for this county, you've grown our county's fund balance, you've done a great job, and you've been a great leader, and we really appreciate you.
I want to say to you, Ed, that it's really been wonderful working with you. That's that never-ending, easy job that you have, to be able to keep the budget, and not only that, to see that Sampson County, uh, has what it has by working with you, and I want to say thank you. We will miss you.
Ed, Mr. Causey, I would just like to thank you for all the encouragement and all the work ethic that you put into me, that you helped plant into me when I was working, when I was an employee of the county. I mean, your goodness would never end. You saw the employees as they were, you treated all of us like we needed to be treated. We could come to you with any problem that we had, and when we left, we were smiling. And that's something to say about somebody. I'm sorry that you're leaving, and I know I'm gonna miss you, and everybody else will miss you here in Sampson County, as well.
I just want to say thank you for taking me as a young commissioner, and with my crazy questions that I've had a lot, and misguided directions I've been in, and you've taken it on with stride, and we sit down and not always see an eye to eye, we're not supposed to. And I appreciate the time that you've given me over the years I've been here, I really do, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Vice Chair Lee, I think you have something you want to say?
Yes. Ten years ago today, on November fourth, two thousand fourteen, I was elected to serve as commissioner for the third district of our beloved Sampson County. I have taken great pride in representing the fine folks of District Three. During the entirety of these ten years, I have served as either chair or vice chair. I was asked to run for this position, and I approached the job with absolutely no agenda, other than serving the county to the best of my ability. We all know that high taxes are not conducive to attracting new businesses, and also break the backs of our existing businesses and our other property owners. During my term, I am proud to say that we have reduced property taxes in two budgets, while continuing to fund requests from our departments. On another note, we were able to reduce the county's debt considerably without extending the life of the loans. Also, excellent fiscal management by our staff and our board has enabled the county to grow its fund balance to a healthy position. And speaking of staff, Sampson County has been blessed with incredible personnel that give their all in keeping the county running successfully. Their help has been invaluable, and they are much appreciated. Over these ten years, there have been many issues that we have faced, and I'm happy to say that I have worked for Sampson County as an elected official, not a politician. I made my decisions based on what I felt was best for the whole county and the staff. Here's a fun fact, tonight is my hundred-and-twentieth monthly meeting since that November fourth election, and I have perfect attendance. In reality, the monthly meetings are only the tip of the iceberg for the time that is required to do this job. While I pat myself on the back for this, this is not what I pride myself on. As an avid sports fan, I will use the term "I left it all on the field", meaning I have given this job everything that I have. It is only fitting that I choose this date to tender my resignation to be effective November thirtieth. To all of my supporters and encouragers, I cannot thank you enough. Your faith in me has made it easy to drown out the noise. And to my family, I owe a huge debt of gratitude for your love and support these ten years. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve, and I pray God's richest blessings on Sampson County.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lee. It's been a pleasure for me to serve with you, of course, we, we go back all the way to the fourth grade, we've known each other that long. But you have done an outstanding job, you have given outstanding service, and put so much time in, but not, there's no, no reward to, to mount to anything, and you still put your all into it. You have set a record, you're the first lady commissioner, and you're also the first lady vice chair, and also the first lady chair. And it was not easy, we, we, the first, the year she was chair, we had a two-and-a-half million dollar shortfall. And I, I know that with that shortfall, she wrote a check, not for two-and-a-half million, but she wrote a check to cover some services. You won't find anyone else that do that, there's not a soul sitting in that audience that would do it. There's a lot of complaints, but you, you're never gonna put your money where your mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sue, I can't thank you enough for being my friend. Ever since I have been sitting in this seat for the past four years, you sort of opened the door for me, said, "Come on in", and me like a dummy stepped on in. I mean, it's not easy to have a position like this, and everything that you do is wrong. And nobody got any solutions, there's a lot of problems, a lot of problems. But where is a solution? That's what we're asking for tonight. Give, we got half of the staff leaving, and to start new people up and train them again, that's gonna cost this county billions of dollars. And it's a problem. I mean, we needing services, we needing water, you think about training all these people that have to be trained. It's a lot of money. I just hate to see, to see, I hate to see everybody leaving. Well, I may be leaving too. It's just, it's just a matter of time, we'll know tomorrow. You know, people are just not the same anymore, and if, if God says so, I'll leave too. But, I mean, when you come to a place to do a job, you're not a politician, I consider myself as a servant, because God called me for this position. And I know he's not calling me here to be abused. And that's what's been happening over the past year or two. It's been abuse, abuse, one thing after, after another. And I know that whoever's at fault, God's gonna hold them accountable for it. God hold them accountable for it, because I don't think either one of these people is leaving for nothing. None of them. And we owe my gratitude, I owe my gra, gratitude, every last one of them. And I thank God for each and every one of them. And I hope that God will continue to bless Sampson County.
Thank you.
To Sue, I want to say thank you for being a friend. This has been a great opportunity, working with you, even when I wanted to go outside and go to your business office. Target, target engineer over there, he, he helped me out too. But sorry to see you leave, uh, but I know we'll still be friends. And, uh, the working together has been, uh, welcome by you when I came on this board. But, uh, I know that your future is, is, is better than your past. But you just have to set your eyes on the goal of what you need to do, but it has been wonderful. And I thank you for what you have given this board, and, um, we're sorry to see you go, yeah.
Thank you so much, yes.
You surprised me. I didn't see that one coming, but that's okay, I understand, because we, we get to talk a little bit, sitting fops, side by side. And, uh, I was wondering about what the family are here, you're, you're sleek, you're not that sleek. Um, but I wish you the best, you're a very good lady with a lot of class, and I know that your children are proud, and you're gonna look after your grandkids, because I know that's exactly what you got on your brain, enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
All right, uh, tonight is my last monthly business meeting for commissioners for District Two. It's been an honor to serve the citizens of Sampson County the last eight years. During this time, I had the privilege to serve as vice chair for one year, and chairman for two years. I was also fortunate to serve six years on the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, representing Sampson, Cumberland, and Harnett Counties. I was selected, uh, to chair the Agriculture Steering Committee for the State Association in the last two years. But being elected county commissioner, my intentions have always been to serve and represent the county with dignity, respect, and fairness. I was born and raised here. I grew up working in a business that my parents started, and which I managed forty-seven of those sixty-seven years. And today, we're still a thriving business just down the street. Everyone knows the story that when I approached by the Republican Party to run for commissioner, that I first declined due to my workload of running a business. After speaking with my mother, mother regarding the quest, her response was, "We all can do a little bit more." And after talking and praying with my wife, we decided that she was right, that I could find the time. I ran for commissioner for one reason and one reason only, to help. We never imagined that my willingness to serve the citizens of Sampson County, my family and I, would be so viciously attacked with lies and assault on our character. This goes on constantly. My family roots in the county dates back to the eighteen twenties. These falsehoods and disinformation also has an effect on my family as well, especially my family name. A campaign should about, be about one's personal goals, aspirations, and platform, not about false accusations and false innuendos. This wonderful world of social media has empowered people to say anything. Truth does not matter, slander, fear, fear mongering, outright lies are the norm. And not to mention the circus show that the commissioners' meetings have become at times. Where is the respect we grew up with and were taught? There's no civility anymore, just meanness and rage. Sad, isn't it? We have denigrated down to Washington politics in Sampson County. Is that what we've become? It's been a pleasure working with my fellow commissioners on both sides. We worked through issues and came, came out united. You know, it's really strange that my colleagues on the left are more respectful and honest than the people within my own party. Shame, isn't it? I wish nothing but success and prosperity for Sampson County and the future board of commissioners. It's with pride that I can return to my family without any regrets, that I met my mother's wishes of doing a little bit more for the, our citizens. My last day will be November the thirtieth as well. God bless all of you, and we wish nothing but the best. I'll accept the motion to recess to reconvene on November the twentieth.
Can we not say something about you? We certainly appreciate you, Gerald, you have been a true gentleman, you have worked so very hard. You have led this county, your contacts with the state, with the association are invaluable, and it's gonna take years for someone else to build those. Sampson County is losing a true servant that has really given his all for the county, and we're all gonna be worse for it. There's been a lot of naysaying and a lot of meanness, and none of it's true, none of it's true. We appreciate you, and I'm so glad that we have had a chance to serve together, and we're gonna continue to be friends, and I appreciate you more than you'll ever know, buddy.
Thank you.
And he did say, people in the Republican Party was treating me, and it was not me.
No, it wasn't.
Commissioner, I want to say thank you, when I needed to get my feet wet, and take me to, took me to see the commissioners of North Carolina, and the governor's, um, aides, that was because I have a friend. And I thank you for working with you, and sorry to see you go, but I know that there's greater things for you. But, uh, we're gonna miss you here, we can't fill those shoes. Can't fill those shoes.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Kibbit, I just want to thank you for being a friend to me like so. You were both friends, it's just like on the other side of the aisle. They came over and met me and became my friend, and I appreciate that. They welcomed me on this, to this board, to learn and to serve, and that's what I have done. And I'll never forget you. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You know how I feel, man, you talk enough, because I have leaned on you a lot as a young commissioner and called you, and you'll never not call me back or not, but sit down and talk to me, and we've gone to the state commis, commissioners meetings together, and I do, and I did see the people you knew. And you, there is, that just, that can't be fixed, I mean, I know it, you know it, so I appreciate you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, uh, like I said, I'll take a motion to recess to reconvene on November the twentieth.
Time?
Yes, sir, please.
What time on the twentieth?
Ten o'clock, okay? Ten AM.
I move that we recess to reconvene on November 20th at 10 a.m.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Got it. All in favor? All right. We're recessed to reconvene. Thank you for coming.